So before we get started, I just want to inform everyone, we have refreshments off to the right. And if you need to use the restrooms, the restrooms are through these doors here. If you have not yet signed in, we want you to sign in. If you have any public comments that you want to provide, please fill out the public comment card. If you have any particular issues where you are, you need questions to be answered. Unfortunately, this is not where we're answering any specific questions. We do want to address your concerns and direct you to the proper staff to assist you, but tonight is to hear comments on our fair housing draft. So thank you again for joining us and we will begin our presentation with Melissa leading us. And also, we have staff from the Housing Authority from Anne Lynch as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. Thank you, Nancy. And thank you all for joining us tonight to discuss the assessment of fair housing. Before we get started, a little bit of housekeeping, we have Spanish and Korean interpretation available. If you are joining us in person and need a headset, those are at the back of the room. Or if you are joining us online, if you click on the small globe at the bottom of your Zoom screen, you should be able to select your language channel. So you, everyone will need to do this. You can select English if you're an English speaker or Spanish or Korean. Additionally, we have sign language interpretation that is available in the meeting and there will also be online interpretation. You'll see that switching off throughout the meeting. So I'll pause just a second to give everyone who's joining us online a chance to choose their language channel and then we will get started. And as Nancy mentioned, there's also refreshments over there. So please help yourself throughout the meeting. So this assessment of fair housing is an analysis of the fair housing landscape in the city of Los Angeles. It's required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and by the state of California. As Nancy mentioned, it's being led by the city and Hackla with assistance from Mosaic Community Planning. And tonight, we also have assistance from the Housing Rights Center. So we will begin with a brief overview of the project, but really the bulk of tonight will be collecting comments from the public. So for those of you who are in person, we would love to hear your comments out loud. For those of you joining us by Zoom, we would invite you to provide those comments in the chat and we will possibly read them out loud during the meeting. But even if we don't get to your comments tonight, please be assured that we are taking that entire chat record and including it in our comment record. So while you might not be able to leave input out loud, please do leave that in the chats and it's something we will be reviewing as we prepare the next version of this document. So to start off, what do we mean when we say fair housing? We're referring to everyone's right to own, sell, purchase, or rent the housing of their choice without fear of unlawful discrimination. Fair access to housing, including sales, rentals, insurance, and lending is protected by federal, state, and local laws. And you can see here on this slide, the variety of factors that are protected as you are in the housing process. If any part of your ability to gain or maintain and enjoy your home is based on these factors, that's a potential fair housing issue and something that this study is looking at. So at the federal level, everyone is protected based on race or ethnicity, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, so whether or not you have kids in your household, and disability. At the state level, there's considerable additional protections. So marital status, age, ancestry, immigration status, language, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, genetic information, your source of income. So if you have a Section 8 voucher, your occupation, whether you are in the military, and other arbitrary factors. And then even beyond this, the city has some additional protected classes as well. So employment status, citizenship, or primary language are additional factors that are protected at the city level. The study that we are doing is part of the city's and Hackla's effort to affirmatively further fair housing. This is a national rule that calls on cities and counties to take meaningful actions to overcome patterns of segregation, to foster inclusive communities, reduce affordable housing needs, and address barriers that reduce access to opportunity. So that last one is kind of thinking about how well you are able to access different types of resources or opportunities. Maybe things like parks, jobs, transportation, a clean environment, those types of things within your neighborhood. If you're not able to have access to those, that can become a fair housing issue as well. So this study that we are doing, the assessment of fair housing, is really looking at kind of on a whole, how fair, how equitable is access to housing within Los Angeles? What comes out of it? What we have a draft of now is a plan for how the city will expand fair housing access through 2028. And as I mentioned earlier, this is something that's required by all cities and counties that receive grant money from HUD. So the city gets housing and community development funds from the federal government and that triggers this requirement. And there is also a state law that requires cities and counties to do these types of studies as well. So we really want to hear from you tonight, but first I'll start with a bit of an overview of kind of what we have been doing over the last year and a half or so. So we spent some time kind of gathering data and doing analysis. Also, last fall, we had a series of community meetings. I think some of you might have participated in those. I recognize some of the names from our registration list from previous meetings that we've had and some stakeholder consultations through the spring of this year. Then kind of over the summer and fall, we spent time writing the analysis, the assessment, and have spent October doing some revision of draft goals and strategies. And that's, we're here tonight to get your input on those as well as the study overall. So after tonight, we will have, we're in the middle of a 45-day comment period, so there will be about 30 more days where you could take a look at the draft and provide feedback. You can do that in email or writing and we'll provide those addresses at the end of the meeting. But after that, we will spend some time making final revisions, so taking all your input tonight and seeing how that might change the draft, how that might affect things. And then at the beginning of next year, we will have a revised version ready to go before City Council and before Hackla's board. And once it has been approved there, that's something that the city and Hackla will send to HUD, to the federal government. So as I mentioned, we have done quite a few community participation events. So we had about 150 people or so participate in meetings, about 500 people that completed surveys, about 11,000 that visited the AFH website, and nearly 275 or so that did consultation meetings or focus groups. So we've spent some trying, time trying to hear from everyone and we hope that the ideas that we have in this plan really reflect that. But again, we want to hear your comments tonight because there's definitely, we know there are ways to strengthen it and that we can do that with input from all of you. Move to these areas. So what could we do to make that easier, to increase affordable housing there? And just behind me, we have written out all of these goals along with the strategies that go to each. So you can take a look at those while I'm talking or later tonight. And I believe they're all on the handout as well. So if you'd prefer to read those at your seat, you can do that too. The second goal is to preserve and maintain the affordable housing that exists now. So make sure that that housing stays in good condition and folks are able to stay there. The third goal relates to preventing displacement. So we know that there are neighborhoods in the city where redevelopment is happening, where prices are increasing. And this goal relates to making sure that housing in those areas can stay affordable for the people that have lived there, you know, live there now and maybe have lived there for years. So how can we prevent displacement? Our fourth goal here is related to equal access to housing. So that's really looking at ways to expand protection from discrimination, looking at ways to address source of income protection. We heard a lot that even though it's illegal to discriminate based on someone having a Section 8 voucher, that that still happens. So this goal is related to helping people access housing. And then last but not least, our fifth goal is really related to expanding different type, access to different types of resources and opportunities. So some of those things that I mentioned, schools, parks, jobs, maybe access to grocery stores. So for neighborhoods that have low levels of access to those things now, how can we improve that over the next five years and onward? So we are happy to hear your feedback about these goals tonight. But for now, I will turn it over to Chansila with the Housing Rights Center to talk a little bit more about what has come out of the last AFH and kind of how these housing goals and strategies work together.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Chansila Al Mansour. I'm with the Housing Rights Center. We are an organization here in Los Angeles that is here to provide free counseling and education and outreach to explain what a person's legal rights are in housing, in particular, if they feel that they may have been discriminated against because of who they are. And I do just want to say that quickly because I know that can be confusing. Early on, you were told what your federal rights are, what your state rights are, what your rights are under city law. Basically, what you need to know is that you are protected by the law, by all of those laws, the federal law, the state. And the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles all have very strong laws to protect you against illegal housing discrimination. And it doesn't matter who you are, doesn't matter what race you are, what language you speak. Everybody is protected under fair housing laws. And so that's what we're going to talk a little bit more so today. And how does this relate to the AFFH rule, the affirmably furthering fair housing rule? Is that that rule is one that the federal government imposed on all of these local city, county, state governments that says that because they receive federal funds to make housing, to produce housing, they have to ensure that that housing opportunity is open and available for anyone. Now, I'm going to be realistic here. It doesn't necessarily mean that the city has to provide free housing for everyone, but the city does have to look at if there are any barriers to that housing for anyone. And if there's anything the city can do, that the city can control to open up that housing for everyone. So six, seven years ago, in 2016, many of us met, maybe some of you were here or there then, to do exactly what we're doing today. And that's to hear from the community because that's something else that the federal government has required the city to do, is to hear from the community and to get their input on the city's draft, which you kind of see written behind me, on the city's draft AFH, its assessment of fair housing. And so back in, let me make sure I'm not going too quickly for my slides. I'm not sure where to point this and it's not progressing. Thank you. So the first thing we need to do is to look at some of the things that can be done in terms of a fair housing strategy. And what are some of the goals that can be done? So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we did back in 2016, 2017, some of the goals that we identified, some of the strategies that we did. So back in 2016, 17, there were community advocates, people from legal services programs, and people from community-based organizations who work with tenants, who we met together and we listened to tenants and we heard some of the things that they were concerned about. And of those meetings, there were about 38 recommendations that we all came together with and provided to the city and the city agreed that those 38 recommendations were things that the city needed to focus on to try to prevent some of the things that are here, to try to prevent displacement, evictions, people losing their houses for reasons that they shouldn't have lost their houses in the city of Los Angeles. And so they looked at who was responsible for creating housing, who was responsible for protecting housing, who was, who that housing was available for. Those are all the kind of responsible parties that the city looked at and thought about in terms of who should we have come together and to hear from. So one of the first things we did was we identified the priority fair housing issues, the most important things that we thought, and when I say we, I mean again, the community and advocates and the city, that we, the fair housing issues we thought were the things we should focus on in terms of what, what should we prioritize? What should we put first and second and third? We looked at those fair housing goals and tried to develop them as well and to respond to those priority issues. If it was really important, what did the city need to do to make sure that our plan, our goal was actually put into effect, that actually happened? We identified and prioritized strategies to address each of these fair housing goals. So in other words, we looked at, well, what needs to be done to accomplish that goal? Does a law need to be changed? Does a law need to be added? Do we need to hear from more people? Is it a matter of money that the city may need to, to provide or need to to raise in order to address that issue? So that's the third box you see there and identify and prioritize our strategies is what that refers to. The next box that you see in this PowerPoint and looks like it advanced, I'm not quite there yet, was to develop the matrix of timeframes to do that. And then the last thing is to take the meaningful actions to actually try to put our plan into effect. I'm sorry, now we can go to the next slide. So here are a couple of the strategies, just, just a couple, because like I said, we came up with 38 of the last time that we went into effect. But here's a couple of things that we talked about doing. And that was, and we said that these were high priorities. We really need to do these first. Expand, strengthen, support against unjust evictions. So in other words, when if landlord was evicting a tenant and they did not have the legal right to do so, or maybe it was a law that needed to be added to prevent that eviction, that was something that was considered to be a high strategy. And then also rent control policies as well. The city of Los Angeles does have a rent stabilization ordinance, one of the strongest in the country. But it's, it's still, there were still ways in which a tenant could be evicted, even if it wasn't the tenant's fault of their own. So we looked at those things as well. We looked at, and I'm looking at the next box where it says fair housing issues. It says segregation, recaps disparities to access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs. What that basically means is that we looked at, is the city, things like, is the city still racially segregated? And if it is still racially segregated, why? Is it because of displacement from certain groups? Is it because certain groups are being discriminated against more so by their landlord or the housing developer or somebody else? We looked at, was there way, were there ways to take away some of the barriers? So that if people wanted to live in another, another part of the city, they, they could live there if they, if they could have afforded, but at least their race and their ethnicity and other things like their language shouldn't be the barrier as to why they, as to whether or not they could live in a certain part of the city or in a certain building or a certain neighborhood. And then we looked at the next box is contributing factors. We looked at, what are some of the reasons as to why there may be discrimination going on or something like that happening? So one of the contributing factors could be the location, location of the housing itself. Is it near transportation? Is it near job opportunities? Is it near your churches, your support structure, your grocery stores, places where you could get things for your children? So we looked at things like that. And then we looked at the metrics and the milestones that, that were needed to put those into place. And then underneath that, we looked at the next box, explore the feasibility of a right to council ordinance to protect tenants' rights. So there was a lot of discussion about right, about right to counsel. What right to counsel essentially means is that tenants should have a right to legal counsel, to a legal representative, to at least help them when they get eviction papers, to explain what the eviction is about, what their rights are, and maybe even to represent them in court as an attorney, because one of the number one reasons why tenants do lose their cases, even if they have a good case, is because they have nobody to go to court with them to talk to the judge, to explain their side, an actual legal representative. So we looked at whether or not the city of Los Angeles should provide this, a right to counsel for tenants. I'm sorry. And we looked at disparities in access to opportunities and we looked at private discrimination as well. Private discrimination is when a private landlord, most of your landlords, unless you live in subsidized housing, meaning government-provided housing, is what's called a private landlord, a person who owns housing. So we looked at that type of discrimination as well. Can you go to the next slide? So here's an example of one of the things that happened out of the last AFFH thing is we looked at the fact that a lot of tenants who have a Section 8 voucher from the federal government weren't able to use that voucher because landlords were still discriminating against them and not taking their voucher. And so out of this whole plan that we did in 2016, we all got together, we said to the city of Los Angeles, you should pass an ordinance to make it illegal for a landlord to say no to a person just because they're using a Section 8 voucher. And that's exactly what happened in 2019, when Los Angeles passed an ordinance that prohibits discrimination based on a person's use of their rental assistance. It could be a Section 8 voucher they got because they're a veteran or the, because they came from a domestic violence program or a homeless service program. But for any of those programs where somebody's trying, the government's trying to help that person and pay their rent, it was, I agree that that would be illegal. And under state law, the state passed the same law to make it illegal to discriminate against source of income. The Housing Rights Center has filed a few lawsuits. We've had some major victories to protect people who have been discriminated against Section 8. Can you please change the next one? So another thing that the AFFH recommended that became law was Stay Housed L.A. Stay Housed L.A. actually came out of the Right to Counsel movement. Again, advocates and community members, tenants came together and said, we need to do more. We have a right to counsel now that says that it's not, it's not exactly right to counsel. It doesn't say that every tenant can get an attorney, but at least we're moving towards that direction that we recognize that that's important. And so a group of community groups and legal services programs, agencies like the Housing Rights Center and others came together in a combined effort to become Stay Housed L.A. It actually became part of the law, Stay Housed L.A., StayHousedLA.org came out of that as well to try to be a pipeline to help tenants get the legal representation and even sometimes rental assistance that they may need. The main goal was to try to prevent their eviction, try to prevent the displacement. So this was a very, and a lot of our opinions, a very great success that came out of the last AFFH kind of discussion that we all went through, is that we have the Stay Housed L.A. program. Next slide, please. Another thing that came out of the AFFH recommendation from the last time is the Tenant Anti-Harassment Ordinance, one of the strongest ones in the country. So the city of Los Angeles passed a tenant anti-harassment ordinance in 2021 that was designed to prevent landlords from engaging in practices, harassment, calls, going to somebody's apartment over and over again, basically really disturbing their ability to really live and enjoy their, their apartment or their unit. And so in the city of Los Angeles, tenant harassment is a crime and it should be reported. So the city of Los Angeles did that and that all came out of this when we did this seven years ago, six years ago. Next slide, please. So now we welcome public comments. I'm, I'm going to be right here again because our time is limited and I know that, I'm sure a lot of you have a lot of reasons, a lot of issues and otherwise you wouldn't be here if you didn't care, if you didn't see that there was something happening in your community. Maybe there's something happening with your landlord. Those are all really important things and the city of Los Angeles and the Housing Rights Center wants to hear about them. And so we will speak with you afterwards if you did want to talk, if you did want an answer to your particular question. But for right now, we just really want to hear from you. We're not really going to respond to each and every single question after it happens, but we still want to hear from you. So please, we're not going to talk about how that, I'm not in charge of how the logistics of that. But is there a microphone that we're going to pass around or do we want people to stand up? Okay, so we're going to pass, and then also that we do, are we all receiving comments through Zoom? So there are a lot of people who are at home or maybe in their car who are listening or watching this evening's presentation and they are able to type in their questions. So we're going to take some questions from people who are here, but we also may take a couple from people who are participating virtually at their homes on their computers.
Good evening. Thank you for having this hearing. I would like you, I would like for you to consider the State Housed L.A. system. To be honest, right now I'm assisting with my aunt. That system is grossly flawed. And this is what I'm saying. When you call State Housing L.A., they refer you to an agency to assist you in eviction process or filling out your forms for the eviction process into the courts, right? So they refer you to an agency, but if you ask them, I want an agency for legal counsel, they say, okay, well, the agency that we sent you to, they don't handle legal counsel. So then even the State Housed L.A. the recording says, if we refer you to an agency and they can't help you, we're sorry, we can't send you to another agency. So then when I try to call for my aunt to Legal Aid of Los Angeles, oh, we can't listen to your case because your referral has to come from State Housed L.A. so we can't assist you. So then when we go to Basta and they say, bring you your documents, bring us all your eviction, your ULD, and they go through all that and you, they don't take consideration of the transportation that you got to get there. They tell you, oh, well, we've accepted your paperwork, but we need what your rent is for the first month. We need that as a deposit to retain one of our attorneys to assist you in your eviction. So that's another flaw. And then so it's just, it's gone, Dr. Shriver. You go to Shriver, oh, they help you to fill out the documents. People need legal counsel to go into these courts because you're dealing with real dog attorney firms for these owners. So I'm dealing with mine again. Here's another situation with another agency. They want you to fill out and bring all the documents. They want you to buy their binder. They want you to sit up there and set up like you're paralegal so you can fight the case for yourself. That's taking time, consume, that's consuming your time because evictions are on the clock. You got to file the answer in five days. If you didn't did it right, then if you checked the wrong box, so this State Housed L.A. program need to be opened up. Whereas if you're asking for legal counsel and you're sending me to an agency that's helping me fill out the documents, that's not helping me. I'm still at point A right now today with my aunt and she's on her third stroke and I'm a caregiver, so I'm doing all the running around and sorry, we can't help you. And I know I'm not the only one. I know it's thousands of Angelenos that's dealing with this State Housed L.A. And the crazy part about it is they're getting government funding. And the crazy part about it is they getting government funding. Getting government funding, what fund if people are still getting evicted? And that's frustrating because it's just really frustrating. So that State Housed L.A. need to be opened up where you can call back and say, well, listen, you sent me to an agency, but I need legal counsel. Public counsel, they said today, sorry, but we can't help you with our attorneys because you have to come through the referral of State Housed L.A. And since they sent you to another agency, our hands are tied. So we need a fund set up for attorneys to assist in these cases because we going against these bulldog firms. And that's what I have to say. Oh, one more thing, the fair market rents, far as how you assess with HUD, it needs to be a two-tiered system. Because HUD goes on fair market rents downtown L.A. My aunt stays in Lincoln Heights, she stays in a fixed income. SSI hasn't had an increase in like ten years, but yet the rents are going up. Even during COVID, the rents are going up, going up, going up. So that's contributing to the homeless situation. So HUD needs to do a two-tiered assessment of rents, one for low income or affordable housing fixed. And then for all the skyscrapers and downtown L.A. properties, thank you.
And just going forward, I think we're gonna keep our comments to two minutes so that we can have time for everyone to share. Sí, mi nombre es Francisca y esta noche me siento orgulloso por estar acá con ustedes. Y la verdad, a mí me compete mucho eso porque a mí me pasó algo similar acá. Lamentablemente me dieron una hoja porque me llegó un desalojo y no vivo sola. Vive mucha gente donde yo estoy. Gracias a Dios hemos llegado a un acuerdo con el dueño, pero tengo una corte que me han dado para en dos meses. Pero me dieron una hoja como con diez abogados, que ahorita esos abogados me dijeron, no hay abogados, pero te podemos dar unas charlas para que tú puedas, este, puedas, este, ir y capacitarte para que tú te presentes ante el juez.
Okay, this is her public comment. Uh, her name is Francesca. And she's going through a situation that's similar to the person that just spoke right now, the gentleman. With the difference that, thanks to God, they had come to an agreement. But in the moment, they gave her a form of people that can assist her and even attorneys. And then she knocked on doors and they only said that for the moment, there's no service. And the disability of her not having the, the money, the, or the status, uh, legal status. And if it was complicated for him with his, uh, uh, right with his documents and imagine the people there undocumented. Thankfully to God, she was able to, um, capaci- um, she was able to inform and then she was able to receive some classes. And thanks to God, they're gonna be able to come to an agreement with the landlord. And now she's speaking here because many of us, we silent. And this is the opportunity to be able to know our rights. Because I work every day and I pay my taxes. So they can just say, hey, I want the house. I know that I haven't fulfilled, but I know that I will do it because I want a home for my children and the people that are there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Boyd. I'm having the same problems, kind of like this gentleman over here. I don't see any help at all. You know, I don't see any help here because you need a lawyer. Yes, it has to be done with a lawyer. You, you call up in, in this place, this, uh, the housing department. Uh, I, I got an apartment through them, uh, through their program. And, and the manager was supposed to have section eight when I got there. Well, when I got there, he has no paperwork. Yeah, so I'm, I'm stuck paying a high rent there for the last two years now. And I, I, I called the housing department, well, I guess you have to move. You move. Yeah, you move. That's what I'm here to tell the housing department, you move. And that's it. But I, I, I don't want eviction on, on me. I paid a lot, I paid, I paid quite a bit to move to this nice place, brand new apartment that has a problem with the sound. I don't know if anybody else has a problem where you can hear everything in these new buildings. Where you could, yeah, you can hear, uh, if somebody's even talking on the phone or walking, walking. Uh, I was taking a shower last year, going to work early in the morning and, and a man chased me. Uh, some man I'd never seen before, talking about, I don't care if you're going to work. I said, how did, how can he hear me talking to my boss and telling my boss I'm on my way to work? Something is going, something is strange here. I, I called the housing department several times. Oh, you have to call the inspector. When the inspector comes out there, oh, we don't inspect for that. Well, what's, what's actually going on in this city of Los Angeles? No, I got a lot of beef here, a lot of them. And it's just towards the hatred. It makes me want to kill. And that's it. About my money being spent.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ana Carrion. Y yo voy a dar mi comentario el día de hoy de que hay en regulaciones en base al hostigamiento. Ese es un punto ahí a la cosa sobre el programa de tajo estoy hablando. En referencia a personas discapacitadas como yo bajo la ley de IDI, hacer regulaciones protectoras para las personas como yo. Para prevenir que las personas caigan en las calles y aumenten el porcentaje a homeless. Lo que quiero decir con esto.
Hi, my name is Eric Carrion. Uh, my comment is that there should be regulations on harassment and bullying uh, against persons that are, uh, disabled, uh, under the ADA laws, such as like myself. Uh, they should be able to protect us, uh, and to prevent more people on becoming homeless and avoid an increase in homelessness.
Uh, lo que quiero decir con esto es que el dinero de Yula, la mesura que se hizo y se pasó por millones, por gente como yo que tocamos door and door for canvas. In all Los Angeles, we are past the measure Yula. And this is more money now. This is a program for, for the people now say, we went to the lawyer, but the lawyer is in the list for the state for a license. Not for all people in, uh, in L.A. because it's more money and don't help the people now. Only saying information, but we didn't, don't need information. We need help because the people is in the streets now. And we have families low income in the street. We have families, um, with kids in the school, more students and in the street and living in the cars. It's not possible, we are paying taxes and don't use the money correctly. We went transparency and the buyer, please, thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna try to make this quick within two minutes. So as I'm looking at the goals for access, um, here's my concern. I know the payment standard increased for housing with Hackla because rent increased. But I think what wasn't taken into consideration is the people who do not have vouchers. So I was just wondering, what is the city doing to consider those who do not have housing vouchers? Because those who are, let's just say, making minimum wage or even twenty dollars an hour cannot even afford a one-bedroom apartment right now in the city of L.A. So I just think that that is something that we need to consider within all these goals. Because right now housing is not accessible for people who are actually working. So when we do increase the payment standard, you gotta also understand that it increases the payment of housing for those who do not have vouchers. And is Hackla doing anything to provide additional vouchers, um, for people who are on the waiting list?
Do you have anyone? I'll probably start with the story. We'll, we'll open it after. Um, anybody else?
Thank you. Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Yupora Butt. I am a student here at, uh, Los Angeles Trade Tech College. I'm part of the ASO Board, I'm the historian. But I'm also a student and I'm also a mother with a disabled child. I feel everyone over here and my major is law. So my question is, I see the program that you have up there, but you're talking about next year. I'm with the young lady and the mother over here. We need help now. There is no way that you can tell me that we get all this funding and we got attorneys down there. We have legal aid and no one can get no help. That's unacceptable, unexcusable. I'm sorry, I, I'm sure all y'all agree with that. Um, and also, I, I want the housing consideration to understand about these corporations that coming in and building houses next to other people hacking up the prices. Uh, with people, and they don't serve the disabled. Um, they don't serve African Americans or whoever, LGBT, whatever. But the prices keep, I'm with this sister, the prices keep going and going and going. That is not fair. I'm with everyone. We pay taxes, we work hard, we come to school, we go to work, we go home and sleep. And I have relatives that are homeless right now because they couldn't afford the rent. That's unacceptable. And I'm sure it's unacceptable to everybody in here. We're not here just to say, hey, how you doing to get a couple of snacks? We're here to let you know, we're done, we're tired, we need help now, period.
Oh, okay. Uh, my name is George Mitchell, I live in, um, Canoga Park. There are a lot of new buildings around there. A lot of people is low income, but how can I afford an apartment in the new building? There is no way I can afford it because the rent is not gonna be, not even the rent I'm paying right now. So how can I afford? Is there a percentage of the apartments they are building, uh, focused for the low-income people? Is there a law that force them, force the new builders to leave portion of those apartments for low income? I don't know. So we need something like that. We need new buildings, but something that we can afford, okay? Thank you.
Uh, good evening, my name is Eddie Torres. I'm a academic professor here at Allee Trade College. Uh, also the political director for the AFT fifty twenty-one. My question involves regarding, um, the recent chapter eight, uh, the, uh, chapter eight pilot program that the Alley County, the Hill of the Solis, used public dollars to acquire, uh, five apartments that were gonna be flipped into a community land trust. And that is a model that is heavily growing, uh, throughout the, you know, country, particularly here in California. Has Hackla or the city of LA looked at that model that the county and other cities throughout California is doing where apartments are taken into, uh, you know, public land and managed by a CDE or an HRE or a nonprofit for long-term use? Um, and then my second question is, there is an increase of ADUs, um, you know, that are legalized, are a partnership with ADUs uh, being incorporated, um, with owners to then rent those for affordable to people with vouchers. A question, thank you so much.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the public comment for Evelyn Vázquez. Uh, she's, uh, going through a very difficult time, um, in the stage. She's staying in a shelter and they have discriminated me for different reasons. Uh, for, uh, okay, but person that is, um, I'm a person that likes to work and then I am also a student and I'm in a very difficult situation. That's it.
We're gonna open for others first before we open up again, but.
So, no, no problem. We start.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Daisy Vega. Vivo en el área del Rey, es en Culver City, eh, entre medio de los ricos de Venís y de El Rey, de, de Marina del Rey.
Okay, hi, my name is Daisy and I live in a rich, um, area between Marina del Rey. The Rey, in Venice.
La problemática es los desalojos y la desegregación que se está dando en estas áreas.
Okay, and the problem is the evictions that are taking place in that area.
Yo vivo en public housing. Uh, solo han quedado tres proyectos que son públicos y los demás ya están privatizados.
Okay, and I live in a public housing and there's only three there are left. Okay, and the other ones are, uh, being, are private.
El problema es, es que cuando hay una privatización, hay dueños de las, de los edificios. Y housing los renta, se los da ellos para que los administren.
Okay, and the problem here in those are owned by, uh, the people that, uh, having the privacy and housing rents to them.
Este es un gran problema porque cuando ya hacen el review del año les tengo que trasladarte, está bien todo, no hay problema.
And, uh, one of the problems is that they, what they do, the review, they said, okay, uh, transfer yourself, there's no problem.
Al año vuelven a revisar todo y dice, no calificas, tienes que irte.
Okay, and a year goes by and they check that and they say, you're, you're gonna have to leave.
Lo que yo vengo a decir acá es que necesitamos más viviendas públicas. Lo que yo vengo a decir acá es que necesitamos más viviendas públicas, no sección ocho, viviendas públicas.
Okay, and what she's here to inform is that they need more housing, they're more public?
Public, the housing. Lo necesitamos, ellos Housing Authority, yo soy a las reuniones siempre.
And for the Housing Authority, she's always joining in the meetings.
No hay dinero para vivienda pública.
Uh, and there's no funds for public housing.
Si hay, lo que pasa es que la tienen en sección ocho.
And there is, but the problem is they have it in section eight.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es.
Good morning, my name is Melissa Castro.
Yo soy miembro de SAGE.
And I'm a member of SAGE.
Yo quería platicar sobre el miedo que tengo.
I wanted to talk about the fears that I have.
Las viviendas de control de renta.
Of the housing of rental assistance.
Ah, nosotros.
Rental control.
Se pierden las unidades de control de renta.
And the units of housing control are being lost.
Cuando hay devoluciones.
When is devolution?
Y yo quiero que existan las protecciones.
And I want it to be a protection for tenants.
Que tienen control de renta.
They have rental assistance control.
La ciudad no.
The city.
Quiero que la ciudad.
And I want the city.
No se enfoque en las construyendo.
Uh, just focus on building homes.
Donde hay apartamentos de control de renta.
Where there's apartments of rental control.
Y me gustaría decirles algo.
I would like to say something.
Una historia muy rápida, pero no es historia, es una vivencia que una persona está pasando.
Evidence of someone that's living, going through.
Conocida.
Someone that I know.
Ella tiene más de veinte años viviendo en una casa correcta.
Living the house that she's renting.
Pero tiene más de ocho años que la, la dueña.
The landlord.
No arregla su, su casa.
Doesn't fix her home.
La tiene llena de.
Has it?
Animales.
Full of animals.
La tiene descuidada totalmente desde pisos, cocina y puertas.
And she's just not helping, doing anything with doors, with flooring.
Por miedo a regresar y eso, que la saque.
Being afraid that they're gonna evict her.
Le han enviado cartas para que salga, se salga y puedan arreglar.
Notices that she needs to leave so they can fix it.
Ella tiene más de sesenta y cinco años.
She's over the age of sixty-five years old.
Busca la manera de tratar de pagar su renta para que no la saquen.
So they want to evict her.
Hace un esfuerzo muy, muy grande.
A very hard.
Y es una injusticia que personas que han trabajado.
It's not fair, it's the people they work.
Y que solamente para que este dueño pueda.
This landlord just increased her rent.
Quiere sacarla.
And wants to evict her. And she has two children.
Es madre soltera.
And is a single mother.
Una persona honrada y trabaja duro.
Hardworking.
Y que estas personas tengan protección.
These people have protection because they're US citizens. And they deserve respect. And their family shouldn't be without a home.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Gabriela Lopez Perez. And I would like to say something too because my family and I, we went through something similar as the women over there. Uh, we moved to South Central like seven years ago and we was paying for, um, I believe. A thousand and eight hundred dollars per rent, but the owner, he didn't fix anything, the house was kind of bad conditions. We had rats, so my brother, he talked to the owner and he say, hey, you have to fix the house, if you don't fix the house. We'll have to move and we're not gonna pay you the rent because I think it's fair, so he didn't, he didn't do anything, we have to move to another house. So now we're living in another house, but they don't have the rent, rent control. So my mom and I were kind of like with fear because we're paying three thousand six hundred dollars every month. And when we got there to the house, um, everything was looking perfect, um, every detail, but after, I can say, two months. The house wasn't in good condition either, so my mom called, um. I believe the name of it is like, they called the people to fix the, the house and they send us the bill, so they want us, they expect us to pay like. Seven hundred dollars when we are there less than a month. So I would like to. If you guys can help us, so you guys can pass a law to control the rent because I don't think it's fair. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I know we still have more, we'll, we'll turn it back to those of you who are in person here, but we do have comments that are coming in online. And we do wanna be able to read a few of those comments out loud, we cannot read all of the comments online, but please note that we are recording. Um, the meeting and we're recording all the comments that are coming in online, um, so they will be captured. And we are not ignoring those comments, so, um, we'll turn over to some of the comments that have come in online and then we'll come back to those of you in the room.
Thanks Nancy, um, so one of the comments that we got. The Los Angeles Housing Authority needs to do more to educate and inform landlords about the benefits of accepting section eight vouchers. A lot of the discrimination that I see is from landlords who seem to believe that section eight voucher holders are problem tenants. And they refuse to accept vouchers. So thank you for that comment. Another one that we received online, what changes, uh, this is a question, what changes is Hackla making to their process to make the approval process? More efficient for their clients and easier for owners to comply? So another comments kind of around section eight vouchers, I think that one is. Um, a, another comment that we have, uh. There needs to be a PSA targeted to potential and res, uh, and resistant landlords. Orientations are needed, are for current landlords or those few landlords who are already interested, so, um. Some marketing to, uh, new landlords to expand the number that are taking, uh, section eight vouchers is, I believe what that comment is referring to. Okay, um, and maybe we'll take a break from the online comments now and if anyone has a comment in the room? Let's see, I think you both commented already, so I'll go over here and then over there.
Thank you. Hi, um. I wanna put on record that, um. Last week, I went to a meeting for the L, LACC D. That's the district over all nine colleges here, um, in Los Angeles, that includes Trade Tech, Mission, Pierce, Southwest. Um, I just wanted to be on record that our students are homeless. When I went there to speak on the panel for students to advocate, one of our advocacy was actually homeless and sleeping. On the campus, we got students here sleeping on the campus because they cannot afford the rent. So my question is, is what are you guys doing about for students here on campuses that cannot afford the rent? Just as well as the safety? The houses that are being built? Houses that are, are in our community? What are you guys doing about the safety of registered sex offenders? Being around our children, around our parks? We pay them rent, we cannot afford the rent, but yet we have, we're scared as a mother and I'm sure as a fathers are scared of their children. Um, and I know we have to rent to everybody and we can't be discriminated against, but at the same time, we have to. Understand the safety for our children, but I really wanna stress. The housing for students is very important, how can I go to school and go to work when I have no place to sleep? Or eat or take a shower, any of that? I think we need to do more, not just for everybody, but for our next generation that's coming up. That includes, I'm raising my child, what if my child has a dis, my child has a disability? What if he's discriminating against and can't get a voucher? Or can't get into housing because he has autism? You know? These are very important issues that need to be discussed and taken consideration, like I said earlier. And like everybody else, we can't wait next year, we can't wait next week, there's a whole family that's got up, they're worried about what they're gonna get kicked out on the street. So we need help now, so please, 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 take these comments and let's put a rush on it, shouldn't take seven years to implement because guess what? What if everyone in here that was actually homeless had no place to go? How would you feel?
Um, forgot, forgot the serious position. City of Los Angeles. You need when, when the developers build all these nice high rises, you need to get that contract out of the developer's contract that says. They will stay affordable housing for ten years. Then after that ten years up, it goes to current market value. Through the roof, that's what my honor is going through right now, here's another situation, if you have to have a hunger and a desire to wanna change. And change the situation, HUD needs to step up and declare a. State emergency for homelessness like Karen Bass did in the moratorium because. Homeless, as you know, is growing, is growing, here's a solution. You got the freaking county general hospital there nineteen floors sitting there vacant. Vacant, if they really wanted to house homeless people, it's still vacant, I walk through floors, lights is on, the water is on. They're giving out, they got different agencies on the bottom floor giving out food and all that, it's vacant, I was born there. So you have to have a willing desire to wanna help the people instead of just sitting in their nice high rises of Beverly Hills or whatever, but that, that. Contract for developers. Needs to be taken out, we only stay affordable housing for ten years and then we go up to fair market rent, my beautiful city Pasadena, they're amazing. All their apartments that they build, they mandate that you have to put affordable housing units in every property, every property. So we have to, we have to do better, we got too many God given resources here in California, you see they're coming here, um, but we have to, God, we have to do better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Boyd again, uh, it's the housing department. They're not looking into these, uh, uh, these places, I, I have one of these apartments for a very low income. Uh, I went there, I, I signed my paperwork to the housing department. Uh, they were supposed to take section eight there, the, the people don't have the paperwork for section eight. So I got caught up there for the last two years and then they made me sign some type of indent, uh, uh, addendum against section eight. Which is against the law. I have all that paperwork, I need a lawyer. Yeah, I need a lawyer. Yeah, what's going on with the lawyers? Yeah, I, the Housing Rights Center just sent me something through the, through my email, but I, I need to go in or with my paperwork hands on and see about a lawsuit. Against this place. Yeah, that's, that's the only, that's the only remedy that you have is a lawsuit. If something like this happened, that I went to the apartment, the people don't have the paperwork and I'm stuck. Yeah, and I call the housing department, well, I, then you have to move out. That's what I say, you move out.
That might be something you can talk to someone individually about after the meeting.
Yeah, I need, I need, I need a lawyer, uh, uh, that's a reasonably priced.
Okay.
So I, yeah, and, 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 and get my money back, that's supposed to be the law.
Um.
Source of income.
Well, thank you, and I think we'll be happy to talk to you kind of about that situation after the meeting.
Yeah, it, it, they, they would say it's the law, but it's not the law, nobody's putting any money behind it to become the law, to be the law, to help any of you. And this is nothing but rhetoric. So where's the money going to? Yeah, and, and, and all these people sleeping on the streets and all the rest of that stuff, that stuff has to be capped, you can't help everybody, you don't have the money to. Yeah, I'm paying the rent there, I'm not, I'm supposed, my voucher was supposed to be used, I'm paying three times of what I'm supposed to be paying and the rent went up. I called the housing department about it, they're supposed to do a hearing about that stuff, that's what the paperwork says. That's what their original plan of the city says. But they're not doing anything, it's the housing department.
I think, um, we can talk about that, uh, after the meeting, but let's go to a couple of the other comments now, but thank you very much.
Good evening, I have a question that I'm gonna need some assistance with, I'm representing a community of tenants that are being illegally evicted. By our landlord, uh, they have fraudulent process server notices going to court claiming they notified us when they have not. Is because they have a contract with LA Housing to house homeless people, they're evicting us out so they can free up the units. LA Housing is giving them a fifty-seven hundred dollar bonus for every three bedroom they released to them. To fill families in. So they show people three bedrooms when we come to see the property and tell them, tell us this available. When we apply and we move in, they tell us they only have a two bedroom, we could go into a two bedroom. Until one becomes available, doesn't become available. Because LA Housing is using that property to house homeless and they're pushing out paying tenants.
Okay, I think that is probably another question that someone could help you with, um, afterwards, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so my comment or suggestion is the response time for fair housing complaints. Um, or inquiries with Hackla. Um, I have actually filed a fair housing complaint. Um, just to see how long it would take for someone to contact me and it took longer than thirty days. Um, so I think we need to do something about that because if a tenant is being harassed or in an unsafe, um, situation. I think the response time needs to kind of be. We need to speed up the process, someone needs to look into these cases. Um, especially when you're considering the crisis that we're in and you never know where someone is. Um, in their state and also when it comes to Hackla, we have to work on whoever is in here from Hackla. Hackla has to work on their customer service skills and you guys have to start treating people like people. Um, it is okay to answer your phone and your email and it's okay to tell someone I don't know and I will find the answer for you. But the response of no response, I think is what's getting people frustrated. Hackla has taken out the formula where you get to reach your worker, now you just talk to customer service. That line of contact, to be honest with you, is BS. So when you leave a message, you no longer get in contact with a worker. I do this all the time because I'm advocating for other people, so I'm calling, trying to get in contact with my clients, caseworkers. No one ever calls you back, so Hackla, we need to get, we need to figure that, that equation too, because if we're not able to reach a worker, then who are we communicating with?
Eh, en mi comunidad hay mucho desalojo.
In my community, there's a lot of evictions.
Vivo en Culver City, están muy altas las rentas.
I live in Culver City and the rents are extremely high.
Si una persona trabaja en un McDonald's, en un Subway, gana lo mismo que aquí en Los Ángeles, ¿qué está pasando? ¿Por qué no ponemos un stop en estas áreas caras?
If someone's working over in Subway McDonald's, they're earning the same amount that you're earning over here in Los Angeles, we have to stop that.
Dice, oh, ya tienes dinero, vete, compra tu casa, es imposible, nuestros hijos están viviendo con nosotros porque están muy caras las rentas.
They say, oh, okay, now you're earning more money, go ahead, go out there and go buy your house, it's impossible, our children are now living with us.
Es vivienda pública, todo tiene que ser igual, los cobros. Es vivienda pública, todo tiene que ser igual, los cobros de renta tienen que ser iguales.
In public housing, all the rents have to be the same, they have to be the same.
La actitud que tienen los administrativos de la autoridad de viviendas son agresivos en las oficinas. Vieron los derechos de las personas que no, que no ven, que no, que no, que no hablan, está terrible.
Uh, the people in, uh, fair housing, their attitude is very aggressive. They don't see what we're going through. They they, they don't listen to us, they don't talk to us.
También están tratando de desalojar a las personas intimidándolas. Si tú no haces esto, yo te doy una carta desalojo. Y es mentira, van hacia mí y yo digo, no es así.
Uh, they're also scaring them into, uh, getting evicted or, or letters of eviction. They're saying if you don't do this, then we're gonna send you, uh, an eviction letter and it's a lie, because I explained that to them.
Las personas deshabilitadas llegan llorando hacia mí, me van a desalojar, he estado viviendo en la calle, me van a desalojar. Es un pánico, es un terror que debe de parar.
People who are handicapped, they're coming up to me, they're asking, they're telling me this and I'm telling them, no, it's a lie, it's a lie. They get into a panic and I tell them, no.
Ese es mi mensaje, ¿qué están haciendo las, las, eh, las organizaciones? Están dejando a la gente que privatisen, los abogados están dando por vencido. ¿Qué está pasando? Tenemos que reestructurar todo.
And that's my message to everybody, we have to restructure everything, you know, um. Everyone who's been evicted, you're leaving them out there alone.
Esto es, es un ejemplo bien claro, lo que pasó en Jordan Down. Los dejaron solos, un grupo de gente, los dejaron solos y eso no es así. So, gracias.
Uh, in Jordan Down, that's an example right there for everybody. They left all of those people all to themselves, they just left them alone. Thank you.
Uh, my comment is, I've been living where I live for three years now. I've been being harassed and bullied by my neighbors. Uh, before I moved there, uh, one of the neighbors, he spit, he spits in front of my door. When I started complaining to the landlord, I received a ninety day notice to vacate. Uh, after the notice, I contacted the housing authority. Housing authority, uh, said they couldn't do anything about it. And from there, they did appoint me to, uh, a legal aid, Los Angeles legal aid. And then legal aid referred me to, uh, Housing Rights. Uh, Housing Rights, uh, did reach out to me, uh, and gave me a letter to, uh, give to my landlord saying that he didn't have grounds to evict me because I haven't done anything and I haven't ever been late on my rent. Uh, however, the spitting continues. Tapping on my door, running back to their apartment, tapping on my wall, uh, having their friends come over pouring, pouring beer uh, on the exterior wall outside of the apartment. And I've been constantly on, uh, Housing Rights as well as legal aid, but I haven't gotten anywhere and I'm still having these same problems. Uh, and the landlord, he, he, he doesn't even answer my calls, he doesn't answer my texts. He also told me once he received the letter, uh, which was back in February, I received the ninety day notice of eviction. I was supposed to be going May first, so that's when, uh, the Housing Rights reached out to him. But after that, after he received the letter, I guess it upset him and he told me not to, uh, bring any more problems to him. And I'm not the problem, you know, I'm just trying to get a solution. I just don't need neighbors spitting in front of my door. So, uh, if that's something you guys could help me with, I'd appreciate it.
So, I, I think we want to check for online. So we're gonna switch back to taking some comments from the attendees online and then we'll come back to the in-person comments, um, again.
Uh, so we had a comment, uh, from the Zoom that, uh, there needs to be public exposure with proof of landlords who reject section eight vouchers, that this should, that should happen. Reporting them to the city and county should happen with huge fines. That was, uh, one comment. Another, uh, rental assistance does not happen quickly enough. Uh, they require three day notices to apply, yet it takes weeks into months to get back to people. This is not timely when renters are already in a time sensitive situation regarding their housing. Let's see, maybe anyone else in the room? Is, is there, one second, is there anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet that would like to share something? Okay.
Can I say it in Spanish? Uh, yeah. Uh, I can try in English, but. Okay, um, um, and, and my name is Araceli and, um, my concern is that, uh, the landlord is charging us three sixty-one monthly. Eh, and those are for complaint fees, which I don't think is fair. Because if he is not fixing what we are requesting to fix is his negligence. And we, he is charging us three sixty-one monthly. They're only three dollars, but what dollar is too much? Three, you know, to every tenant, I don't think that's fair. Thank you. Complaint fees, three sixty-one. Thank you.
Um, okay. Yeah, I, I still have my section eight, I'm holding on to it, even though the, uh, the manager there doesn't have their paperwork and sent me an application stating that they did. And I had to call the Department of Aging, I had them come there and, um, still nothing became of it. Because you need, uh, for any of these problems to be remedied, you have to have a lawyer. You need a lawyer. And I, I've been shopping lawyers and, uh, they want money. They, they don't want contingency, they won't take contingency for these type of cases. So what happens, this, 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 like this meeting is for nothing. Yeah, it's just for nothing. But one thing, uh, I did have to have some, I have some help for someone, uh, at the section eight, uh, you have to go down there. Yeah, but you have to sit there for about three hours in order to talk to your worker as a section eight down on Wilshire. Now I talked to my worker. Yeah, but I had to go down there and you have to sit there, three hours. Yes.
I think the real agencies that really need to be blessed with the funding is HRC because they put their feet in the ground and they will file the lawsuit. I've even been in their offices on Wilshire, seeing all the lawsuits that they've done, because that's what the issue is. You give these agencies money, I don't care if it's anybody Lasa here. Um, they give lots of billions of dollars every year. Guess what they do? Go hire more people and employees to go out and count the homeless people under the freeway to take the statistics, but you don't refer them and pick them up and take them to a shelter. Then, oh, we gotta, we gotta increase our fleet of cars to electrical now. That ain't did nothing for the homeless population and that's what I'm seeing what's going on, billions of dollars. The governor gives billions of dollars, the state gives billions of dollars, Mayor Bass just came back from Washington DC, more billions of dollars and the homeless population is steadily growing. Something wrong with that picture. Something is really wrong with that picture. And another one, I just heard on KPFK that the county is housing emancipated youth coming out of foster care in hotels, two fifty to four hundred dollars a day with no supervision. No supervision, in our church, we go in, we've only been blessed church to go into Central Juvenile Hall and have an all-day picnic barbecue to encourage the youth, over seven hundred youth. But you're putting it in youth in foster, coming out of foster care in hotels? That's insane. That's insane. So city needs to cancel that contract of developers having affordable housing for ten years and then we can go up to the current market value. That, if they're building affordable housing, they need to keep it until affordable housing until Jesus come, because guess what? They're getting tax credits. Yeah, they're getting tax credits. So that's it.
I believe the word affordable is lie. Because the wage is sixteen dollar or seventeen. And when you want to get another apartment, they say to you, oh, your income is too low, I'm sorry. And they said, is affordable, where is affordable? So this word need to be really mean what they say, affordable renting. This is what I, uh, I think. And also I have been living in that place for many years. I could buy a house, I'm sorry. I could buy a house when I did all the accounting, it's three million, four million, I keep get, giving to that, uh, particular, uh, landlord to support his business. And I said, oh, they said you can buy, you can own? Where is it? And they said, oh, I'd have that facility. And when you go to, how they call them, mortgage, uh, those people, they said, oh, you know, you need a cosigner. And I said, is, it is, they said, affordable means low that I can get something and also have something to save in case of emergency. I need a lift to bring me to hospital, where is it? What is the affordable you're talking about? And I think that's lie. To me, that's lie, because when I think and I calculate every, uh, expenses I could have, I could own instead of renting, renting. I'm getting old, one day, maybe I will die just like this and without leaving something for me. So I like, uh, or, or the federal to reconsiderate that word of saying affordable and go to, uh, how they call them, those people who, who lend, the lenders, uh, uh, yeah. Exactly, they give us a hard time and running around. Oh, you know, you need a trade job, oh, your job is too low, they pay too. Exactly. That's, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any? Anyone else? One more here.
Let me give you the microphone first.
I'd just like to add, uh, to what I, uh, mentioned earlier about the issue I was having in my, uh, with my landlord. Uh, I applied for several apartments, but one in particular, this was about a month ago, uh, where this complex was going to accept me to move. And they sent my landlord a, uh, email, uh, letter of verification, you know, if, you know, that I rent from him. He, he never responded or replied back to that agency and so I lost the apartment. Yeah, I couldn't get the apartment. And also, uh, to kind of piggyback on, uh, what this woman here doctor just talked about, uh, uh, oh, uh, a leasing agent uh, told me around the same time, about a month ago, that, uh, when I told her I had a voucher, she said to me, uh, it takes too long, the process takes, takes too long. So, uh, I took that as she wasn't willing to work with me as a section eight tenant. So I think that also needs to be addressed with housing. You know, leasing agents should not tell you that that process take, takes too long. And, you know, and then you lose a place, I mean. And she's, but she's still emailing me vacant apartments that's available. And this, what, like two months ago, I, you know, if I had went through, if she had went through the, my paperwork process two months ago, I would have, I would have been in the apartment.
See, anyone else? Was there? Okay. That was that when a person figures they're going to lose everything, they lose it, okay? He said, when a person figures they are going to lose everything, they lose it.
Meaning they go off on the
Yeah. When you're under stress that you're gonna lose everything, yeah. Okay.
No, no.
Maybe that's another, another quote, it takes a lawyer. Um, do you want to move on or?
And, and even after, I gotta know.
Okay, one, one more.
Talk again. Even at the, the list that the Housing Rights Centers gave me, those lawyers, I even went over there. They, they don't make any sense. They're not law, I, they're lawyers, but they're not helping anyone. Yeah, they're not, yeah, I don't, I don't know what, what, I, I don't understand anything of this. Nothing, because I, 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 like I said, I went out to, I went way out to Whittier. I live in the valley, I live in North Hollywood. I drove out there and I talked to the man, I said, he, he didn't make, he made no sense at all. No sense whatsoever.
You need a lawyer, you need another lawyer. Yeah.
He doesn't make any sense about what, what he's there for.
Okay.
Not there to help anybody. They go, yeah, the rules they have on their paper, they're not there to help anybody.
Cuando haga una transición que está haciendo la autoridad de vivienda a las viviendas.
When there's a transition of, um, the housing.
Cuando hay una demolición y van a hacer nuevas viviendas y lo van a convertir en sección ocho.
When there's a transition and they're gonna divide the properties and they're gonna turn them into section eight housing.
Debe de ver un comité de vivienda supervisando que no violen los derechos de las personas.
There should be a committee that should shoot supervise the section eight housing that nobody's rights for section eight housing are violated.
Voy a hablar con mi gente latina, no saben leer, no saben escribir, no saben leyes, no saben políticas.
I'm gonna talk about this with my community, the Latino community, because we don't read, we don't write, we don't understand these laws and policies.
Salte y firma acá, es un bono, te aseguramos tu vivienda.
They say, go ahead, get out, um, leave the property, sign this document and, uh, everything will be fine.
Pero no explican que no tiene documentos, no va a calificar en sección ocho.
But they don't explain that they don't have documentation or any documents that will allow them to actually qualify for section eight housing.
Y no tiene trabajo en ese momento, entonces todos esos obstáculos influyen para que usted califique una sección ocho y muchas más cosas, no califican, fueron desalojado mucha gente, gracias.
And that's what they tell everybody and these people, then they're evicted and, um, yeah, yeah, they were evicted then from these, uh, section eight housings. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, everyone. Um, I think since we have, uh, heard from everyone in the room who, uh, had a comment that we will move on now, uh, to our last slide about, uh, our next steps going forward. Jessica, could you advance that slide? So as I mentioned earlier, we are in the middle of a forty-five day public comment period. So as I mentioned earlier, we are in the middle of a forty-five day public comment period. So during this time, the draft assessment of fair housing is available for everyone to look at. Uh, you can review it. You can, these strategies and goals are in there along with specific steps that the city and Hackla plan to take to implement them. So if you go to the end of that document, you would see all the things that the city and Hackla plan to do over the next five years to address some of the things that you talked about tonight. Um, and I think really to work to improve some of the programs that maybe came out of the last assessment for fair housing. So improving implementation for some of the things that we talked about tonight. Uh, whether that's more resources or making laws stronger, so that things like harassment aren't happening. Um, those are, types of ideas are in within these strategies here. So we hope that you all will take a look at them and provide comments. You can access them via the city, the website uh for the project there. It's uh housing.lacity.org slash residence slash assessment dash of dash fair dash housing. Um, so we would invite you to go there and download the draft. It's also available um at uh LAHD Public Counters, at Hackla's office, and at all public housing sites. And we also have a copy here tonight if anyone wants to uh leaf through it a bit before leaving. So the comment period will occur through December eighth. And if you have additional input that you want to share beyond tonight, you can do that by writing an email uh to lahd.afhpolicy@lacity.org or by mail to the housing department and you see their address on the screen there. Uh, so we recorded this meeting and captured all your comments, took notes. Uh, and for those of you joining us via Zoom, uh, if your comment wasn't read aloud, don't worry, we are taking the entire chat and will include it in our comment record. So um, if you still have something that you want to share, put it in the chat now and uh it will be part of the report's comment record. Uh, with that, uh, a little bit about next steps. So um, after we have all those comments, we'll work on a final version of the report. And then that will go to city council and Hackla early next year, so January and February for them to approve it. After that, the plan, the final plan will be submitted to HUD. Uh, so we really thank you for coming tonight and all the input that you provided. Uh, and we hope that we will continue to get input from you over the next month. Uh, you know, if there's relatives or friends that you'd like to share it with, please do. Um, let's see. And Nancy, did you have anything else you would like to add? If, if there, I think there were a couple people that had kind of specific questions. If you want to talk to someone after the meeting, we'll be here. And if you are joining us via Zoom and had a specific question, I think you can leave your name and email address in the chat and someone will get back to you as well. So thank you again. Thank you all for joining us um and bearing with us. I know we had a late start. We had some technical difficulties. Even though we prep early, um, things do happen. So we appreciate your patience for those of you who are waiting here and those of you online who are waiting to be let in. You were in the waiting room for some time. I received a few emails about that. So we apologize. It wasn't intentional. Um, and um, we do want to continue to receive your comments during this public comment period. As Melissa said, through December eighth, you can email us or you can send them via mail. Um, those are the two ways that we're receiving comments still. Um, and you have until the end of the day, December eighth, to do so. We are um recording this meeting. We've captured your comments, which we really do appreciate. Some of you um here will be able to talk with you um a bit afterwards concerning whatever's, particular issues that um require additional um discussion and referrals. Uh, but again, we thank you um and um thank you for joining us and have a good evening.